Morning, everybody. It's 8:30. We'll call this morning's meeting to order for Tuesday, June 8th. And our first item is the approval of the agenda, and we do have one agenda addition to fill an additional correctional officer. And if it's okay with the board, we could put that down with the 925 item.
Move to approve the agenda with the addition.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gross. Second by Commissioner Ebinger. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Citizens to be heard. Do you have any citizens to be heard on items? Anything online?
No, Mr. Chair.
All right. All right, we'll move into approval of bills and vouchers.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gross. Second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Approval of minutes from May 25th.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ebinger. Second by Commissioner Gross. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Our 8:35 item is request to waive penalty on late payment for taxes for H and D clobbers. I understand Lorraine Stephenson was going to be, is she on?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, Lorraine. And do we have somebody from the Treasurer's Office with us? Okay, all right. Well, we do have, we do have the request and information presented in our packet. Lorraine, we have what you had submitted in writing as your request. Do you have anything additional that you would like to mention to us? I know if the board has some more questions for you, they might follow up with some. But do you have anything else to add to your, what you had put in your report?
No, nothing to add. I tried to provide the details and appreciate your consideration.
Okay. Has the board had the opportunity to review this? And do you have any questions?
I guess I got some questions concerning 2010, 2019. I mean, I know the reason is that they're dealing with health issues. Have they been dealing with health issues since 2010 or has it all been health issues? Or, of course, there's no one here to respond from the, Lorraine, I mean, I guess...
I'm not, I'm not sure. I guess I'm not aware of the ones in 2010 and 2019. I was, I just now have become involved with my father's business, so I'm not aware of anything that happened previous. So you're telling me this has happened before?
Well, on my sheet, it says tax payments are late for 2010, 2019, and 2021 for all three parcels. Now, we're asking for, what are the penalties for...
I apologize. I'm sorry, is that question for me?
Okay, what are the penalties for this year?
Yes. Yes.
So that was just information that they were late then?
I think it was just part of the criteria that we always have taken into consideration is if they've, if they've been late in the past. That's been part of conversation. It was my understanding that the amount of request is for the, late fees for the 2021 tax.
That is correct. It's the only one I'm aware of.
Okay.
I think an important clarification too, though, is that they were late but not delinquent. You know, I certainly feel there can be oversight and understand where Lorraine is coming from on this.
How much are we asking for forgiveness?
The letter says $1,268.72. And I believe that, I read that the Treasurer's Office has the full payment in their hands with the exception of the late payment fee. Is that correct?
I sent the check in.
For the first half, yeah. For the first half.
Thank you.
Did you have anything else, Commissioner Mogul? I do want to point out that everything, everything else that's within her letter certainly falls within the guidelines of what we have granted requests like this in the past, so.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Ebinger.
In looking at...
And I have changed the address so that everything comes directly to me now.
Okay. Right?
Yeah, just looking at this, I think the background information was on the 2010, 2019. But looking at this, I certainly can understand when you're taking over an elder parent's businesses, it looks like everything that can be done has been done at this point to square things. And the previous two years really aren't a result of Ms. Stephenson's actions. She seems to be taking initiative there. So I would make a motion that we forgive the penalty on this 2021 taxes.
I would second that.
We have a motion by Commissioner Ebinger. Second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same sign. That motion carries and those penalties have been waived.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Lorraine. Have a nice day.
Thank you.
You too. Bye-bye.
Okay. Next, we have our 8:40 item is overview of Red River Regional Dispatch Operations. And our Director, Mary Philippi, is here. Good morning, Mary. Do you want to come up, if you want to, whichever one you're comfortable at there, have more room, or if you're using the laptop, are you?
No, I'm not.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Well, good morning.
Good morning. I am here to give you an overview of the Red River Regional Dispatch Center. I was asked to do a dispatch 101 for the Commissioners this morning. As way of introduction, my name is Mary Philippi. I'm the dispatch director at the Red River Regional Dispatch Center. I have been in...
Mary, can you talk a little closer to your...
Oh.
Yeah, there you go.
Gotcha. Is this better?
That's much better. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. I've been in dispatch public safety for 33 years. I started in 1988 as an employee at Clay County. And I worked in Clay County, and we dispatched for both Clay County and Moorhead until the time of our consolidation in 2002. And then we became regional dispatch employees, eventually moving to the current facility that we're in. And I was a dispatcher working the consoles for 22 years. And then I was promoted to Assistant Director in 2010. And in 2015, I was promoted to Director, and I've been the Director since that time. To start with an overview of the Red River Regional Dispatch Center, we are a consolidated dispatch center. We answer 911 and non-emergency phone calls for all of Cass County and all of Clay County. We dispatch police, fire, and EMS to all calls within our jurisdictional area. The Red River Regional Dispatch Center is unique in the nation because we cover state lines. We were formed in 2002 between a joint powers agreement between Clay County, Cass County, Moorhead, and Fargo. Those four entities joined to be a dispatch center in March of 2002. They made a decision that the financial obligations would be based on a metro cog formula for population. And so that is how we are financially supported to this day. The Board of Authority was established at that point with agencies, two members from Moorhead, two members from Fargo, one from Cass County, one from Clay County, and a non-voting member from FM Ambulance. And during this time, they established some committees, including the Finance Committee, Personnel Committee, Law Enforcement Operations, and Fire EMS Operations. And those were established to set up the dispatch center for budgeting and personnel, also to bring the operational things that we had, both in Moorhead, Clay County, and Fargo, Cass County, together to try and to make services as consistent as possible across the board. When we were established, those four committees were in place, and they're in place to this day. We also have one additional committee that's been stood up by the Board of Authority since then, and that's the Emergence Interoperable Radio Committee. And that's to address the, it was started to address the digital radio system when all of the agencies went to digital in the early 2000s. And the operation of that, and that committee is to this day as well. During the time between March 2002, when the first JPA was signed, and December 2002, when the dispatchers in each community became Red River Regional Dispatch Center, they also hired a Director and Assistant Director, which we have to this day as well, those two positions. In December of 2002, all of the dispatchers from Clay County, Moorhead, and Cass County, Fargo, became Red River Regional Dispatch employees. We applied for our jobs and were hired. When that happened, there were 11 dispatchers on the Minnesota side and 19 on the North Dakota side. That was the authorized levels. There were actually 28 dispatchers who were working because they were too short. I'm not sure if it was Moorhead or Fargo that was short. But 28 dispatchers came over to the Red River Regional Dispatch Center. And we continued to work at our current places that we, or the place we were at. We worked in the Moorhead Law Enforcement Center and Fargo, worked in the Fargo PD. And so between March 2002 and March 2003, a facility was, they need to make determination where the facility was going to be. They hired a company to analyze possible locations and the cost. And what that came up with was 300 MP in Fargo, and that's where we reside to this day. There was a lease signed at that point. It was for slightly over 5,000 square feet, which included our common areas prorated for that. And with that lease, there was also the option to purchase after 10 years and 12 years and 15 years. Over the course of the years, we added more dispatch staff in 2004. We got back up to that 30 as authorized. In 2006, we hired a radio systems coordinator, and that, he is the third administrative personnel that we have at the Regional Dispatch Center. And at that time, we added another 359 square feet, so an office could be made for him. In 2007, West Fargo requested to become a member of the Joint Powers Agreement and consolidate their dispatching services with Red River Regional Dispatch Center. They did not originally consolidate, but there was a COPS grant that was used for a records and CAD system that they needed to be part of the consortium to, to be involved in that. And so they chose to consolidate, and we, they were added to the Joint Powers Agreement. So there's a Joint Powers Agreement now between Clay County, Moorhead, Cass County, Fargo, and West Fargo. West Fargo was added also as a member of the Board of Authority at that point. And we added two additional communication operators then. And in 2008, in December of 2008, later that year, there was a decision made by the Board of Authority to add one additional Board of Authority member to the board so that there will be equal representation between Minnesota and North Dakota. And that was from the Clay County Police Agencies. So now, the board as it stands is four from North Dakota, four from Minnesota, and a non-voting member from FM Ambulance. We had a, also have IT staff that work under the Board of Authority, the Red River Regional Dispatch budget. Those, they were added in 2009 to support the, the records management CAD system that I talked about earlier, that the entire consortium went in. So we have three IT people that support Red River Regional Dispatch and all of our consortium agencies. Because that doesn't include just computer-aided dispatch, it includes the records management system, the jails, civil, fire departments, the mobiles, and the fire trucks, and the, and the police departments. So those three IT people, although they are City of Fargo employees, Red River Regional Dispatch budget reimburses them for all of their work. They work for everybody in the consortium. In 2010, our JPA was updated, or I'm sorry, it was actually 2011 it was updated because of our 2010 census. As you know, it's based on census, and Cass County pays 71.8% of it, Moorhead plays 18.2% of our budget, and Clay County pays 10% of our budget. And we expect that that will, will change as soon as the 2020 census comes out. We're unsure of when that's coming out. We've heard it's coming out, it's coming out, but we haven't really seen the numbers.
Mary, I have a question. The 10% that Clay County contributes, is that the small cities and the county, or is that just Clay County's share?
Clay County is the only contributor because they are in the Joint Powers Agreement. The small cities are not in the Joint Powers Agreement.
The small cities are billed from the Sheriff's Department or part of the 10%.
And...
That's something that's not Mary's deal.
Right.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Yes. So in 2021, our budget was $4,760,000. And we have an additional special assessment that's sent out to the agencies, and that's for that New World or Tyler Technologies Maintenance. And that's based on a different cost-sharing method. It's sent out usually in May. And those, that cost-sharing method is for the number of licenses they held at contract signing. So that's a different cost share, and each agency is billed out for that as well. So that basically takes you further back to where we were, bless you. We had, in December of 2012, there was an ad hoc committee that was stood up called a Facility Planning Committee. And one of the reasons for that is because there was the opportunity to purchase the facility that we currently reside in. And when we signed the lease originally, then we were given the option to purchase that for $320,000. And the Board of Authority voted to go ahead with that. That was something that we were able to get a loan for and pay off within five years. The loan was part of a group loan with the City of Fargo, and it was 1.25% interest. So it was a very low-interest loan. The facility was appraised at that time, and it was appraised at almost twice the, the cost that we paid for it. So that was a good, good deal. But we had discussions at that time about the challenges of the location of the dispatch center, because there are some, some challenges related to where we're located with security, and we're in a multi-use building. We have proximity to a railroad where we're at. There were some concerns. Decision was made to go ahead and, and purchase at that time. But we've continued to grow. And in 2019, we, I looked at our numbers and the realization that we have, we don't have enough staff and we don't have enough consoles to continue to support our growing area. We have, I told the Board of Authority that we needed 47 dispatchers. And at that time, the Board of Authority later authorized the hiring of a company called Matrix Consulting. We went out for RFP, and Matrix Consulting did a study where they showed that, that indeed 47 people were needed to staff consoles. However, if you take into account turnover, 57 people could be needed. And that brings me to where turnover is. Turnover at the dispatch center is, is high, and that's across the nation. There's the APCO, which is the Association of Public Safety Communications Officers. They did a 2018 Project Retain study, and they found that the average turnover in a dispatch center is 28 to 29% across the nation. It's very high. In 2014, our turnover was 31.4%. And we've done a, a good job of, of recruiting and retaining people, and we're now at 12.12%, which is still high. And it's very, very difficult to recruit people for a, a job that requires 24/7 and is a very, can be a very stressful position. So retention really matters in dispatch centers because it takes about six months of training before they're able to work a console by themselves. It's a very rigorous training program. So we're currently authorized for 41 dispatchers, although the Board of Authority has authorized to continue hiring up to 47, should we be able to get up to that 41, which we've not been able to do at this point. If we would find the people to fill those positions and be able to, to use those people, we are looking forward to that. But the Matrix study also said that by 2035, we would need around 70 dispatchers working the floor. So that's a much larger number. Even if we could get those people, we're at full capacity for our space. We have eight dispatch consoles. Looking at the use of those consoles and the dispatch and the phone calls that are coming in, we should be staffed at nine people for a good portion of our day. And we just don't have the space for those, those people to sit. There is no room to keep up with our growth and no room to actually even provide the level of service with those consoles that we have today that we should be. So it's a serious problem in our dispatch center. The dispatchers are handling multiple radio channels, multiple phone calls at the same time. I distributed a copy of our statistics, and you can see that we had over 100,000 911 calls that came into the dispatch center in 2020. We have four consoles at our backup center at West Fargo PD, but those are not fully functional stood-up consoles. It's a plug-and-play system where we drag them out of a closet and plug them in. We've been able to use them during some incidents where we've had some additional staffing. But it is difficult when you're staffing call-takers in one city and the dispatchers in another city. It's not undoable, but it just makes it a little bit more difficult, and then we don't always have the ability to use that room. In addition to the 911 calls that we had last year, we also take in administrative calls, and we had over 165,000 of those incoming, which brings us to over a quarter of a million calls coming in each year. And then, of course, the dispatchers are making outgoing calls to assist with the agencies, and we had about 64,000 of those. We also take text to 911. The state of Minnesota, as a state, went to text to 911 in 2018. And some of them were answered at a regional level. We were able to take ours at a dispatch level, so we take them all for Clay County here in the northwest region. Beltrami County is the text to 911. But we were able to take ours here because some of the infrastructure we have in state in place. And we took about 180 of those last year. Don't get a lot of text to 911 calls, but it is something that we have available for the, the citizens in our area, and it does, does help to, to get help to people who don't feel comfortable calling.
Mary, I have a couple, so the committees that you talked about, you have the Finance Committee, the Personnel Committee, and what were the other, and then you had the interoperable radio, what were the other two?
We have, okay, we have a Law Enforcement Operations and a Fire EMS Operations Committee.
And fire, okay.
Those are the five standing committees of the, of the Board of Authority.
Thank you for the history, by the way, going back to, I think that's important for everybody to know how this all started. And I happened to get sworn as Commissioner that January following that contract or that JPA form. I started in 2003. And since then, it's, this, this group has, it's really been looked up and praised as being something that collaboration works, you know, across, across both sides of the river. And I, I still think it's the case. Recently, we've heard some things that, that are operational things that I think can be fixed, but we can get to that. Commissioner Ebinger will have some things, but I have a couple. So in 2002, when this was done, how many consoles were actually in place at that time?
I can't tell you what was in Fargo because I, I worked in Clay County, but we had four consoles. Interestingly enough, when I started in 1988, we had two consoles. And then to prepare for Y2K, we added some consoles.
I think, I think this, I think as the discussion goes on for, for us, I think the number of consoles is going to be an important topic for going into the future. Let's see, I had, in 2010, you talked about Cass County being 72%, right? And then Moorhead is 18, and Clay is 10?
Mm-hmm.
Now, on the Cass County side, Cass County, they worked out a deal where Cass County just is paying for it all. And they're, but they also get all the 911 fees in North Dakota. Is that correct?
It's completely different the way that Minnesota and North Dakota operate for 911 fees. In Minnesota, the 911 fees go to the state, and they're distributed back to the counties and cities. In North Dakota, they go to the county, and a portion is brought back to the state.
Right. I think that's, that's, when, when we look at the breakdown that you gave, the reason that Cass County does it all is because all of those 911 dollars go to Cass County. Is that correct?
Yes. In fact, previous to, Cass County had a, a vote to increase their 911 fees. They could do that in the state of North Dakota. They were at $1, and they increased them to $1.50. And at that time, because all of the fees were going to the county, the county took over, making all the payments, before it was split up between Fargo, West Fargo, and Cass County.
And, and you say that right now, so from 2003, when you really started, 2003, 2004, by the time you got the joint deal all working, you had 28 dispatchers, and now you're authorized for 41, and it could go to 47?
Correct.
That room?
If...
And you could get, and get them hired?
Right.
Okay.
We are currently at 37 dispatchers right now. Recruiting is difficult. We did advertising, and we ended up getting three people to interview. We made two conditional job offers.
And you look at the, I can just imagine what the total population increase has been from 2010 to 2021. from 2010 to 2021, with the way West Fargo has grown and Fargo, and Morehead for that matter, is, and Clay County has grown. But I think you've answered my questions for now. Commissioner Ebberger, I think you had some things you wanted to mention too.
Yeah, Mary, we've had some concerns from rural Clay County regarding response on that. Really, it's twofold. What have you heard on those complaints? And what's been done to address them?
We have heard some complaints. We have, occasionally, people make mistakes. I always say, we hire humans and we do have some, some mistakes that are made occasionally. What happens with our process is that we expect the agencies, if they have a complaint, to contact the Red River Regional Dispatch Center. The Assistant Director is responsible for all complaints and recognitions and she takes those. We give them to the, to the ship supervisors sometimes to investigate or to, or she does it herself. And then we always answer back to the agency where the complaint has been made. We have a, because we're a dispatch center and we're used to documenting everything, those are all documented. So I am aware of some complaints. Sometimes they're sustained, sometimes they are not. But we do have a rigorous process to, to investigate and we always get back to the agency that brings it to us. We sign a, a number to it and document everything.
So a citizen complaint to an agency, if the citizen complains to Morehead PD, Morehead sends a complaint and you respond to Morehead PD?
That's correct.
And that'd be in writing?
That's correct. Everything is in writing.
Audio files and things like that attached to it?
That's correct.
Okay. What I'm hearing, and tell me if, if, if I'm, old cop, I don't want to lead you and this isn't a courtroom, but it sounds like, one of the, one of the concerns that we have on this commission and working with some of the rural mayors, is that there's inadequate coverage on the console for our needs. If that were true, is there any way, at this point, with the resources you've got, that Clay County could have an independent, separate console that's operated strictly for their use?
I would agree that there is inadequate coverage on every console. Clay County actually has, if we were staffed at seven or eight people, which most of the time, we are staffed at seven people. Clay County does have a dispatcher committed to them. However, that dispatcher, because we have, all of the consoles are able to do everything, all of those dispatchers are also answering calls. And you can see that we're receiving, I mean, 800 in some calls a day. Those are not spaced out during the day so that we can take them. Those dispatchers are taking phone calls and answering the radio. So yes, I would agree. I would agree that every console needs to have a, the dispatch duties divided so that we have call takers and dispatchers. That's the way most dispatch centers that are of any size do it. We don't have adequate consoles to do that.
One of the, can I, if I can, Commissioner Ebberger, one of the, you know, based on, on our conversations, as, as Commissioner Ebberger talked about, and we've, this, this has been a concern among some of our rural mayors, to the point where we did, we have had a meeting with them and we've discussed some of their concerns relating to this. And I, I, I find it an operational thing that can be fixed. I want to start off by saying that. But I, I, I also believe that, I don't care if the call comes from Yulin, Minnesota, or Barnesville, Minnesota, or Morehead, Minnesota, or Fargo, North Dakota, or Cass County, North Dakota, all of those calls should be answered within an appropriate amount of time and, and be somewhat uniform in their ability to be answered. That's, that's the concerning thing to me and that, and that's one of the concerns that we've heard, is some of these calls probably haven't been answered on time. And, and that goes to the question about a dedicated council. So.
I'm not sure specifically what to address there, but when we are receiving calls, our dispatchers are answering the calls as quickly as they possibly can. They don't know where it's coming from. So those dispatchers are simply picking up the phone. 85-plus percent of our calls are coming in from cell phones. So we're not, we don't see where they're coming in necessarily before they're coming in, so.
You don't know until they're answered?
Right.
Where it's coming from. Okay. Okay. Commissioner Mojo.
Mary, I live in rural Clay County and I'm happy to raise my kids there, but based on the concerns that I've heard from rural cities and town, is there, there's this, this building concern that if someone calls 911, there will be such a delay until a response comes to these rural cities or, or houses, that, that people are starting to say, okay, if my kid is significantly hurt, what do I do? Do I throw my kid in, in the pickup and take them to Sanford or what? And so I guess from a person in an elected position, that's really concerning, that there's a growing doubt, for whatever reason. I'm not on the board, I'm not in those discussions. So you can understand maybe where, where me as a rural commissioner would have concerns. I know that there is a workforce shortage and it, and I'm sure it makes your job really challenging. And I, I don't know how we fix that. I know it's not specifically dispatch-related. I certainly would support whatever it takes to make sure that the dispatch center is staffed adequately because we have the growth to justify it. That said, there, you know, I am one of those people that have got a lot of calls from rural citizens and the mayors. And they're just not quite sure why it seems to be a gap in coverage. And my question for you is, if there, you know, I get these complaints and I don't really know who to bring them to. I've just forwarded it to the commissioners that have been part of these discussions. Is that something that I need to make sure I'm, I'm giving to you or how do we, what's the, what's the chain? And my, and if I don't understand what the chain is in a, as an elected, in an elected position, I'm not sure that people do know.
If there are complaints, we take those complaints from citizens, from responders, everybody who would come to us. We would handle those appropriately and get back to them. I, I don't know that, if you're getting a lot of complaints, I would say that we're not hearing those.
Okay. All right. And, you know, what can we do going forward to make sure that a complaint gets to you, gets to the board? You know, I, we are united in this and we want to make sure that we address it holistically and so that everybody knows what's going on. I appreciate that everything's documented, but I want to make sure that the board, as well as yourself and the people making those complaints know that it's a group effort to fix the issue.
I think that what we can do is to make sure that the dispatch center is hearing those things. Sometimes I think that there are perceptions that maybe something took a long time. People in crisis often feel time slowed down. We also have, everything is recorded at the dispatch center, everything is timestamped. We, although it may be the perception that the dispatch center did not dispatch somebody quickly, what happens is that the call taker is on the phone and that call is being dispatched as we are speaking a lot of times. As I referenced earlier, a number of our calls come in on 911 from cell phones. Back in the day, in 1988, when I started, everybody went to their neighbors and used their phone if they were on an accident on a county road. And we knew exactly where they were calling from. Now they pick up the phone and we don't know exactly where they're coming, calling from. The 911 system is not as, as good as, say, like the Uber would get. So we have some things to do as a country to make things better, but we can look at anything. And sometimes responders and rural responders are volunteers and they take a while to get there. I myself grew up in a rural place. My, my parents were both on, on rescue squads and the fire department. And I know that it takes some amount of time, sometimes, for the responders to get there. That may or may not be something that people are looking at dispatch doing. But we certainly don't think we're perfect. We're not.
And I have one other thing and then I'll let the conversation go is, is I know you'd said earlier that it's not identified if it's a rural call versus a Fargo call at all. What is the CY channel? I've had that conversation. Like, people have said, well, the reason, reason we're not getting responses because we're calling in on the CY channel and we're not getting.
Okay, so the, the state of Minnesota has a project called Armor, and that is the trunked radio system. In, in Clay County, the rural responders go to a CY channel. And when they're paged out, that channel is for, for them to have their, to free up the fire EMS channel so that they go to the CY channel and can do their conversations. If there is a, a, something like a fire, a working fire, or something that they need to have monitored, those two channels are patched together, the fire, the main channel and the CY channel, that is.
So there's no issue in terms of that, that stifling the response?
That should not stifle response whatsoever. That's not assigned until after they respond.
I just, Commissioner Mojo made a lot of really good points there and, and I want to just follow up. I think this issue regarding complaints, and I know Commissioner Ebberger and I are serving on this dispatch, all the issues related to it, whether it's staffing and, and of course, the capital for the new, what we're going to need for the new place. And so we're anxious to be part of that. Going back to the complaints, which seems to be the topic of discussion this morning instead of the needs of the building, but I do want to, I do want to say that we as a board are going to probably have to communicate with our, our rural cities. And I do think we, we should have a process on this side of the river in terms of where those complaints, while they start and where they end up going to. And if we have to be part of that, we should be part of that to then get in touch with you. To, to make sure that, you know, like you said, sometimes a complaint can be perception, but sometimes it can be real. And so we need to, to always watch those. Commissioner Gross has been patiently waiting here.
Not to change the subject too much on, but where all your fees come from? I know when this 911 started out, there was a, probably a 50 cent charge or dollar charge to all the landlines. But what is, I mean, now the landlines are disappearing. So where do your fees all come from now?
There's a tax on your cell phones for 911. Those are where the fees are, that are, I mean, in Minnesota, it's a very small portion that comes back to the, to the city and county, but those fees are on the cell phone.
Okay.
Yep.
So if a cellphone is.
Oh.
That's not good.
So if I have a cellphone and then a, a family has six, seven phones on that thing, you get one cellphone fee then, or you get six, seven phones fees?
Every, every line has a fee. Every line has a fee. We don't collect those fees.
Dropping the landlines and getting a cellphone costs you more.
Yeah. Well, I was just wondering how that, I mean, whether your fees are still coming in on, says a switch from landlines or?
Yes.
Many people dropped their landlines, you know?
Right. And, and the dispatch is unique, that we don't receive any of those monies. Those come from the agencies. So what each county or, or agency is bringing in, in fees, that's not something that I, I know offhand.
Yeah. Like you said, they get it from the state and stuff, so.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Ebberger?
Not to drag it out too far, I believe, and this is a couple of years ago, or many years ago now that I think about it, I believe what eventually works its way back to the cities and counties from Minnesota is about 14 percent. The state uses the rest. Good news, we have an armor system that's taken us into the 21st century. Bad news is we've got to find the other 86 cents to make up the difference out of our funds. And so it, it gets a little pricey for the Minnesota side, whereas they have a buck fifty instead of 14 cents to work with over in North Dakota. But just for public awareness and to share with the commission, and I'm certainly not going into this with any preconceived notions because a complaint, my motto in 40 years of this has always been that you investigate them, you don't judge them before you, you, even if it sounds bizarre, you go into it with an open mind. But for 12 years, I dealt with a lot of complaints on the dispatch center, a lot. And the 28 years before that with another agency, I dealt with a lot of complaints on the dispatch center, a lot. And, Mary, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the majority of those, sometimes indeed there was, there were problems that needed to be addressed. The majority of them were people under stress who had expectations that it goes like it goes on TV and it doesn't. A lot of them are new employees and the turnover rate in any dispatch center is phenomenal. And you've got folks that are still trying to figure it out and are under pressure as well. My, my experience here has always been, whether they're right or wrong at the dispatch center, I always got a comprehensive and professionally done investigation and a report back to me. And if that's not the case now, we need to find that out. And if it is the case, we need to make sure that the flow between the concerned first responders and public officials we have in Minnesota, the flow of their concerns goes to the dispatch center, is adequately addressed and they get those professional, clear responses back. I think that's kind of the, the bottom line on what we need to shoot for. The mayors or those communities out there have concerns and rightly so, and they're trying to represent their people on, on a, on a very critical issue. And we need to help them do that. So anything we can do to facilitate the, the communication flow between those with concerns and the response from the dispatch centers, where I'd like Commissioner Campbell and myself, who are, this is in our portfolio, to be part of.
Thank you. I, I know we're kind of running late. Thank you for, for being here. I, I just, one last thing I wanted to follow up on, goes to Commissioner Mojo's question regarding the CY channel. And, and you said that there could, if there is a rural fire or something and it, and it might require that CY channel to be patched into the other armor system or whatever?
They're both on the armor system. It would be patched back to the main channel.
Okay. So, so who, who makes that determination that it should be patched back in? Is that, is that a request made or is that a dispatcher determines that or how does it work?
We have some procedures in place. Some of these procedures are, are newer to the, the agencies, but that procedure is that if certain things happen, say a working fire, then they should do the patch right away. And when the dispatchers are getting a call on 911, sometimes it's not obvious what it is. People have, are telling you there's smoke or, or something going on and it, it might be burnt food. It's not necessarily a fully, a working fire. So, and that can also be done at the request of the agency anytime. That's not, it is. That's not, it is certainly not something we restrict. Um, if an agency requests a patch, the dispatcher simply does it.
And then, and one last question. Going, going to the dispatchers who work the consoles, um, there, there's, there are significant differences, aren't there, between Minnesota rules and laws versus North Dakota rules and laws? And what, what do the dispatcher, dispatchers need to know? Is there, do they need to both, know both systems or, and how does all that work?
Um, the dispatchers are not law enforcement, so we don't expect them to know laws. Um, they don't give legal advice. Um, but we expect them to dispatch according to our call guides. And when I talked earlier about the operations committees, both fire EMS and the law enforcement operations, we have, um, call guides that are set out for them, which tell the dispatchers what questions they need to ask and who they need to, to send. Part of the, um, process with those operational committees is to try to make, um, things as consistent as possible. Never want to set the dispatchers up to fail. So, having 15 different processes is a very difficult thing.
Maybe that's, that's more of what I meant rather than laws as processes?
Yes.
Because there can be different processes depending on what agency you're working with.
There can be different processes. However, those are decided at the, the operational committee level. Um, those, again, part of what makes a consolidation work is having some consolidation of processes and policies and procedures.
Well, Mary, thank you, um, thank you for your time this morning. Um, I think it's been very helpful with, with what you've provided, provided us today. We still have some things we, we would like to continue to communicate and we look forward to, um, we certainly understand the space crunch needs that, that you're dealing with right now. And for the safety of all of our citizens on both sides of the river, we need to, we need to fix that and fix it soon. And I, I, I think we're, we're certainly, uh, supportive of, of getting that resolved one way or another, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is, um, Steve, are you gonna work on this one? This is the Cas, Clay, Cass County, uh, joint letter in response to legislative changes to Minnesota statute. I gotta put my readers on here. Excuse me. 609, uh, 066, use of force.
Thank you, Mr. Chair members of the commission. And I would note that we do have Sheriff Empting, uh, also here, who will probably be able to fill in a number of, of areas here in this discussion. Uh, as, uh, as you all may remember, uh, through some of the, our committee updates, Commissioner Campbell, Commissioner Ebbinger, and also, uh, Sheriff Empting have discussed some of the legislative changes that went in, that were enacted earlier this year, again, to Minnesota statute 609, uh, point 066, specifically the use of force laws in Minnesota. Uh, uh, those, the, those changes to that law, uh, basically exposed the law enforcement officers working within the state to potential criminal prosecution and pursues guilt of officers using deadly force unless the officer provides and the courts accepts a statement covering, uh, three-part testing documenting, documenting the necessity of that deadly force usage. Uh, with border states, communities of both in North Dakota, South Dakota, Iowa and Wisconsin, uh, there are cross-border mutual aid agreements, uh, that are, are utilized across the states. The city of Morehead and Clay County have had a long partnership and longstanding relationship with, with Fargo, West Fargo, NDSU police, Cass County, uh, the Highway Patrol in North Dakota and Bureau of Criminal Investigations. Uh, with the changes to the law, uh, we've been notified by all of these different agencies, uh, both Clay County and the city of Morehead, that they will, uh, that these North Dakota agencies will no longer cross, uh, state lines or backup agencies, uh, for, for specific law enforcement operations due to these new standards. Um, Sheriff Empting, uh, Brian Melton, County Attorney, uh, have multiple, have had multiple meetings, uh, with representatives, uh, across the river. Uh, recently, we've, uh, we've met as a, uh, a region with, with elected officials and law enforcement agencies. Uh, and for your consideration this morning is a letter that was, uh, written on behalf of, of, uh, both the city, the Clay County, Cass County, city of Morehead, city of Fargo and city of West Fargo. Uh, and addresses the, the concerns for cross-border, uh, relationships in regards to the, the change of, of the use of force laws. So, at, uh, Sheriff Empting, I don't know if you have any additional feedback that you'd like to provide.
Uh, yes, thank you, Steve. And also, I apologize to the board for not being there, uh, in person. I'm down in Brainerd right now at a sheriff's conference. Um, this has been something that's been very difficult for us, um, since this new law has gone into place. We, uh, had daily operations between Fargo and Cass. Um, and since this new law has gone into place, that has since stopped. Um, there are some potential, uh, proposed, uh, wording changes to this law that they're gonna try and do, but I don't know how successful they're gonna be at that. Our, uh, our, um, our MSA and, and the Chiefs of Police Association are trying to do that. I don't know how successful they're gonna be at it. Um, so, I think this letter would definitely help, uh, in that and I fully support the letter as it's written and, um, in the efforts that we're trying to do. We're not only trying to do this for our area, but, uh, also for some of our other, um, you know, partners down in the Wilken-Richland area and, and Polk and, and, uh, and Grand Forks County area as well.
All right. Thank you, Sheriff. Commissioner Ebbinger.
Yes, and thank you, Sheriff. I appreciate you being here on this. Um, I've been with the, working with the committee that's looking at these issues. Um, I'm very concerned. This is not just something that impacts on border communities, although the impact on border communities is massive. Our ability to respond to, uh, critical incidents right now is, is really hampered. And our ability to support our North Dakota partners is hampered. The majority of the population of North Dakota lives in counties that are joined Minnesota's border. And I've heard concerns from them too. I do not doubt, uh, the decisions made by North Dakota law enforcement leaders. The sheriff over there and the chiefs over there are not happy with this. But, given the, the flawed legislation that is involved here, uh, they are being responsible. And, uh, although I wish they would decide otherwise, there's a lot of reasons for them not to let their officers respond over in, into our state. Uh, I saw a really good article with an MPS, or, I'm sorry, a, uh, Minnesota Public Radio, NPR, uh, a byline on it in the forum this morning. And it addresses other issues on this. They don't, they don't mention the border issues and the impact it has on communities like ours. But Attorney General Ellison, who, uh, this was given to him and, uh, kept in the Attorney General's office for review this statute for months, released about a month before it went into, into, uh, effect in our state. And it, one of his notes in there is the first threat criteria may be unconstitutional in evaluating this law. This law deprives an identified group of people in our country of their Fifth and Sixth Amendment rights. And that group is law enforcement officers. And I have real serious concerns about partnerships to keep our communities safe that have been worked on for decades. We just saw the dispatch center. Uh, the ability of so many hundreds of thousands of people to be safe in their communities is being jeopardized on a law that ve- very much wouldn't, probably won't be able to pass a federal appellate review. The Assistant Commissioner of the Department of Public Safety, Booker Hodges, when he was trying, they were trying to do a rapid training of law enforcement and he was addressing law enforcement officials. And he said, quote, "This law is about as clear as mud. It's a poor piece of legislation that needs to be fixed. And we need to let the governor know that we're aware of that. And we need to do whatever we can do to make sure he's aware of the jeopardy it puts our communities in." So, I hope that we, I, I hope that we will move forward with this. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Ebbinger. I, I, um, I, I, I agree with this letter, uh, too. I think it's, I think it's well-written and it addresses the concerns of our, of our communities and the safety that we need to have. And, and the need to have the mutual cooperation, um, that we've always had with our folks on the other side of the river. When we get into certain situations, uh, there's times when, when not one of our agencies has the manpower to, to resolve these issues and we need to be able to have confidence that we're gonna have coverage, no matter what the event is. And so, I, I fully support this letter. Uh, I do wanna, I do wanna say that, um, in terms of drafting legislation, it also reminds me of, of some legislation that was recently proposed that hasn't gone anywhere yet and it had to do with our regional juvenile center. And it, that we recall, there were two, there was a senate and a house file that, on two different issues that would have, um, to us, it was, it was very concerning from a safety standpoint for both our staff and our residents that are there. Um, and I, you know, so, we continue to, to work on that and, and ultimately some, I'm not suggesting that legislation, some change isn't appropriate, but I don't think this one was. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna certainly support, um, sending this letter. Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. Uh, we just had a long, vibrant discussion about the dispatch center and, um, how there may be some gaps and lack of coverage in Clay County. On this, uh, piece, if this legislation goes forward, the North Dakota partners have said they will not cross the border to aid Clay County or the city of Morehead. That just leaves our coverage even more sparse. I, um, you know, I am horrified to think what would happen if there was a major, major catastrophe or threat to the safety of citizens and to not have the aid of folks that we've also offered aid to in North Dakota come to help us because of legislation. I agree. I think that continuing conversations to make sure we're holding the public and, uh, peace officers accountable is, is fine. I have no problem with continuing to better the system to make the public as a whole safer. But, this is not it. Um, this is absolutely not it. And I, I really hope that citizens will also reach out to folks, uh, making decisions at important levels and let them know that, um, the Clay County and Cass County area is a, um, is separated by a river, but that's about it. We aid each other on a number of different things and, um, this is very concerning.
Thank you. Commissioner Gross.
Should we, I was just wondering, now we're, uh, sending this to the governor, plan of sending this to governor. I mean, this really just involves border counties. I mean, uh, if you, in Becker County, some of that, Ramsey County down in Minneapolis, this really doesn't affect you because you're not bringing anybody across the, uh, state lines or anything like that. So, should we be talking to our own legislators more than, uh, um, the governor to get this thing changed?
I, Commissioner, uh, Gross, I, I think that there's, um, there's several issues in here that, um, would apply to law enforcement officers in communities that are not border cities as well. I, I think there's certainly issues that are addressed in this letter that go beyond just the border cities issues, that they're just, uh, and it goes to what Commissioner Ebbinger said even, is how constitutional is some of this? You know, so, um, so I, I, I think it just needs to be reworked, you know?
Well, I agree going to governor. I mean, I don't know the problem with that.
Right, right.
You know, but I was just wondering if, is this affecting, but you're saying it affects more even the central counties?
Yeah, sure, absolutely. Commissioner Ebbinger.
Yeah, Commissioner Gross, um, one of the things that I think we should all be concerned with, no matter what your perspective is, and I, I, Commissioner Mojo pointed it out, there are things that need to change in the system. We found that out in, in a stark and disturbing way. This, making the police use of force in the state of Minnesota, something that's based on legislation, this flawed, jeopardizes the state's ability to prosecute bad actors in the law enforcement community. You will have a police officer who may be charged with taking a human life with a flawed statute that automatically gives them appeal opportunities and it's questionable that it's gonna be effective in prosecuting. You need the best, tightest law in the world to prosecute a police officer who's violating his trust in misusing force. Not a flawed thing that's, contains glaring constitutional questions that open it up for appeal. So, it not only doesn't serve our citizens who need protection, it doesn't serve the system that needs protection from bad actors in the law enforcement community. We need to give them, give folks like our, our county attorney the best statutes possible to go forward and prosecute bad actors. And this is not that. So, it affects everybody in the state. It should concern people on both sides of the, of the issue.
Thank you for that. Yeah, I, I, and at this point, I, Brian, I wanna, do you have, do you have anything that you'd like to share on this? I noticed that you were, uh, you were requested to be a signator on this letter.
Yeah, I would say, uh, for the, for the board, um, you know, both myself and Sheriff Empting are already individual, uh, signatories of here. We've already signed it, um, but obviously we want to bring it to the board, uh, for the board's approval to allow for, uh, board, uh, signatory. You can see who else is all on there, the mayors, uh, chiefs of police, those. I think just everything that we've already said and we've agreed here, or, or I agree with everything we've talked about here, there was a lot of discussion of whether or not with this flawed, um, statutory authority, that this is already in effect. I want to make sure the board is well-aware of it. It, it is current law and our law enforcement officers are working under it currently, uh, no matter what. I mean, so, as we work through the border issues and problems that we have, we also have just the issue and problems that our own law enforcement officers are having to work under this flawed, um, uh, legislation. And really, I think what Commissioner Ebbinger was saying, you, we don't want to wait for a time or a problem that happens, then we have to have this challenged under the courts and, and have that challenge. It's better to recognize it right away up front and look to, to either change it, which, which is potentially, I think, what Sheriff Empting was talking about. There, there is a legislative movement, uh, to look to try to re, uh, rework the, the wording and rework the legislation itself, uh, and hopefully that helps and does occur. Um, there was discussion of whether or not a lawsuit would go forward, uh, and whether or not, uh, the Chiefs Association, Sheriff's Association would look to, uh, to sue on behalf of, uh, law enforcement to try to change the law, uh, based on some of the unconstitutional issues that are out there. I think that at this point, they, a lot of the powers that be have looked at it and at least don't want to go forward right now, uh, with a, a lawsuit and hope that the legislative, uh, method would be the best way to move forward. Uh, and so, I would agree with that. But, I do think this, uh, the letter that's been worked and the discussions that we've, we've had, Sheriff Empting and I ourselves have had numerous discussions with law enforcement partners across, uh, across the river. And then, we've had meetings with, um, commissioners and other mayors and everything, which is where this letter ultimately came out of. So, I'm very supportive of it. Uh, I think that, uh, I would, um, would ask that you would sign off on it. I think it's very important and I think it's a very important message that would go to the governor as well as then the, the heads of both, uh, senate and the house as well to make sure they know the issues that are out here that we're working under.
Who initiated this law? That the sheriff's department, I don't know, Mark, do you know whether sheriff's department was opposed to this thing be, before it was passed or were they aware of it or? I mean, who initiated this law to become effect?
There were legislators that initiated it. There were a lot of discussions that, um, you know, originally the county attorneys association was not asked to consult on it. The chiefs of police, uh, the sheriff's, uh, association did look at it at the time when they first, and I, and Mark can talk about it too, but I know we've had a lot of discussions. They, they believed this was the best they were gonna get at the time. And then, once the entire law was written and really looked at and analyzed, realized that we've got some real serious issues that were included in there, uh, including, really what's included in the law is it's a three-part test of what a, a law enforcement... a three-part test of what a law enforcement officer is supposed to go through before they would use deadly force. And again, the question we've talked about, the first one is articulating the basis for that use of force, and potentially violating the Fifth and Sixth Amendment, you know, of that police officer. And so, I don't think a lot of people considered that issue when they ultimately made the law and put it into effect. And so, now, as we, that analysis that went on later on, I think really brought into question, the County Attorneys Association, when they saw the law as it was written, questioned it right away, I think, you know, and Mark can talk about the Sheriff's Association, and once they saw it in full force, knew it wasn't correct. So, that's how it kind of went through the process.
Right, that is correct. Thanks for clarifying that, Brian. What ended up happening with that was, one of the law enforcement groups here in the state of Minnesota, they kind of ran with the law to work on the wording of it. The Sheriff's Association and the Minnesota Chiefs of Police Association backed them. And then, once we actually saw that law, and once we were able to get that law in our hands, 11 days prior to it going into effect, because it did sit on A.G. Ellington's desk for so long, and it wasn't a month that we got this law. It was 11 days that we were made aware of this law, in that we had to change our training on the law. And you can't train 11,000 cops in the state of Minnesota in 11 days. So, it did make it very difficult for us. So, once we started seeing this, we immediately started raising questions through the Sheriff's Association, through the Chiefs Association, reaching out to all of our senators, all of our representatives to try and get something fixed with this. Our senators, our representatives are fully aware of the law. They're fully aware of the concerns. There is definitely some Fifth and Sixth Amendment issues with it, especially when you say you have to articulate with specificity the reason for the use of force. That gets to be difficult sometimes. I mean, that's a Fifth Amendment violation right there. And like Commissioner Ebinger said, you're opening yourself up to appeals immediately. So, this is a major issue for us that I believe we do have to do what we can to correct.
I think this letter is very thorough, and a lot of people worked on this. We've talked about a range of issues regarding this, the statute, and I would like to move that we support the letter written in conjunction with Minnesota and North Dakota partners in response to changes to Minnesota State Statute 609.066, Use of Force Law.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
By Commissioner Kaylee, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? I want to thank those who took the time to write this, and I think they covered it well. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. That motion is carried unanimously. And that authorizes, then, Commissioner Ebinger to sign that letter on behalf of the county board.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next, we have a recommendation for two appointments for the Clay County Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Darlie, good morning.
Good morning.
And we do have your cover letter, kind of explaining things, so assuming you would like to introduce Kim.
Yes. Good morning, Chair Campbell, Commissioners. I am happy to be able to present two recommendations to you from the HRA Board of Commissioners for your consideration for appointment to that board. One is Kim Schofeldt, who is here today and would be happy to answer any questions that you may have. I gave some brief background information about both her and Anthony Dillard. As we have done before, we advertised the position. We'd actually done so in September, and then again, this January and February. Unfortunately, one of our commissioners passed away at the end of January, and so, our board only has four members. We're required by law to have five to seven. If Mr. Dillard and Ms. Schofeldt are appointed, we would be at six, which I know is not ideal, but we have a commissioner who will be reaching the end of his third five-year term this coming February, and we would love to have some time for transition.
So, ultimately, when all this is done, you would be at five?
Yes.
I did notice in your report that you had three applicants.
Yes, we did. And two of our board members interviewed all three. We are required, under the state statute, that there's a geographic representation. Right now, one of the commissioners, who will be reaching the end of his term, lives in Holly. One is in rural Roelog, and one, yes, those are the two who are rural right now. No, I'm sorry, one is in Glendon. All three of the applicants were from Morehead, as are one of our current commissioners. There was one applicant that met the criteria of a tenant representative, which we are required under both federal regulation and state law to have, who is a Morehead resident. We also currently only have one female commissioner on our board, so all of that type of consideration, as well as backgrounds and things that they could bring to complement the other board members, were taken into consideration by the HRA Commission. We're very grateful for having more interest than openings. I believe this might be the first in our 46 years, so we're very happy about that.
I guess if you had the interest, I was just curious as to why you wouldn't be afraid to go to seven instead of five.
The other person is a representative, lives at the Morehead Public Housing Agency, and I believe was interested in that tenant and former homeless role as well, but he wasn't one of our tenants, so would not qualify under those criteria. But certainly, if we did decide, or this commission decided to go to seven in the future, I'm sure he would still be interested at that point.
Okay. Kim, tell us a little bit about you. We did get a little bit of information about you in Darri's report.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to be here today. I was given the option to either come or not come, obviously, and I just thought, well, if I'm going to be representing Clay County, you should know who I am. So, I am a daughter of a military, Navy military person, and grew up in northern Minnesota, actually at Lake Itasca. So, that's kind of God's country. So, it was a little bit of a change coming to Morehead, with there's flat land and not a whole lot of evergreens. But I am married. My husband works at Case New Holland. I have two grown children. One lives in Dallas, the other in town here. I will plug that I'm going to be a brand-new grandma in October, so all of you that have grandkids can smile about that. So, I am a Realtor with Kwame Real Estate. I formerly owned my own business in Morehead called Unishipper's. It was a third-party logistics company. We did decide, majority owner did decide to close that business, COVID-related. But again, been a real estate agent for Kwame since, for the last 14 years. So, I feel like I have a great background that I could bring to the housing authority as far as housing needs and issues. And not everyone is meant to own a home, not everyone, but everyone should have the right to own a home. We have a huge issue with housing shortage in Morehead, both apartment-wise for, you know, stable housing. And I truly believe that the family unit is really important in our, in a healthy community. And in order to have that family unit, sometimes homeownership is one of those key things, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And these are five-year terms?
Yeah, five-year terms, which we would request that they commence June 1st, if possible, or else June 15th would be fine, too. And they would serve five years with the term expiring January 31st. And I don't know if I can do that math in my head quickly, but I think that that would be of 2026.
So, is the five-year based on the appointment date, or is it?
Let me check. Yes, I want to get this correct. I am not asking for that, because I'm asking that Anthony Dillard complete a remaining term of John Wilkie, due to being deceased. And his term would expire on January 31st of 2021, 2022. I have to get to the right year, 2022. And then, Ms. Schofeldt's term would be new.
Yeah.
Typically, the HRA terms have always expired January 31st. That is up to this board, though, as far as when you would want that term. It has to be a five-year term, but it could be just up until January 31st of that fifth year. That's within your discretion.
Well, I think if you want to be consistent with what you've done in the past, that would probably be good. But I think because we're, these are separate terms, I think we're going to need two different motions here. I would suggest we have a, start with the motion to fill the vacant term.
The vacant term of Mr. Wilkie.
And that, your recommendation of your board is that Anthony Dillard would fill that position to January 31st of 2022. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. So, we have a motion by Commissioner Gross.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Okay, then, the next one would be the recommendation for Kim Schofeldt?
Schofeldt.
Schofeldt, okay.
I had to ask five times.
And that would be, if my math is correct, would it be to January of 2026?
Yes, January 31st of 2026.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Mojo, and you have a comment?
Just a comment. I've talked to Kim several times at Morehead Business Association meetings, and I think she'll be a really great fit for this. She is passionate about housing and about some of the upcoming needs for our community, and I'm excited to see her in this role.
I hope that, you know, I know we talked about Morehead's needs here, but we do have to remember this is Clay County HRA, and this deals with every community in Clay County, and, because Morehead also has their very own HRA, correct?
Yes, they have a public housing.
So, we're aware of that. That doesn't minimize needs of any one community, but all these communities might have their own needs that have to be discussed. Commissioner Ebinger, do you have?
Just to the motion, I think we need to identify whether her term would start on June 1st or June 15th, too.
Okay. The recommendation was June 1. Does that meet with your?
Whatever they need.
That would be ideal, but.
All right. So, is that okay with your motion?
Yes.
And Commissioner Mojo, that's included in yours? All right. So, June 1, and that would, so any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Kim, you're officially on the HRA.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and I do appreciate all of your service and all of the service of those who volunteer to work on our commission. They're fabulous contributors to our community.
Thank you. Right on time. Come on in, Dave.
Good morning.
Morning.
All right, we're a little delayed, but we've had a couple of important topics this morning that we had to talk about. So, all right, we're here for a bid opening for a three-bridge replacement, and the apparent approval of low bidders, right?
Correct, yep.
So, are these all one bid?
Yes, it'll be a combined total. For one, it'll be one bidder approved today. We do still take paper, copy, and electronic bids today, and I think it's working in the way that's best, but we did only receive electronic bids, which was good. It's a little easier on our end, and there's literally no room for errors. So, Justin does have his computer with him, with the electronic bids that he can read. There's three different locations. Two of them, we will facilitate for the township system, so they're on town roads. They've got their separate town bridge funding. And then, the one other structure is on a county road, and that'll come about 95% from bridge bond funds and 5% from our local Clay County levy.
For the record, Dave, so we have SAP 014-598, that's 077, 014-599-108, and 014-599-112. And can you specify for the record which two are township and which one is county?
Right, the 599s, those two are township.
Okay.
And then, 598 means it's on the county road system.
All right, very good.
All right. I'll just, just for note, on your sheet there, you see at the top-right corner, the engineer's estimate for the combined total is 478, 160. And I'll let Justin start with the bids.
So, the first bid we have is from Central Specialties Incorporated. They do have a complete bid and acknowledge the one addendum, and they do have a bid bond in the amount of 5%. Their total bid is $551,062.00, 551, 062.00. The second bid is Celine Brothers Incorporated out of Holly. They mailed their bid bond, and they did acknowledge the one addendum.
And they do have a bid bond here in the amount of 5%?
And their total bid is $527,012.00, $527,012.00. The third bid is Gladen Construction Incorporated. They do have a complete bid and did acknowledge the one addendum, and they do have the bid bond in the amount of 5%. Their total bid is $515,515.80, $515,515.80. The fourth bid is Landware Construction Incorporated. They do have a complete bid and did acknowledge the one addendum, and they do have a bid bond in the amount of 5%. Their total bid is $483,281.00, $483,281.00. The fifth bid is Midwest Contracting LLC. They do have a complete bid. They did acknowledge the one addendum and do have a bid bond in the amount of 5%. Their bid amount is $461,175.00, $461,175.00. And the final bid is Riley Brothers Construction Incorporated. They do have a complete bid. They did acknowledge the one addendum and have a bid bond in the amount of 5%. And their bid amount is $419,551.00, $419,551.00.
All right, and I would assume that you're looking for approval based on no errors and calculations. Is that correct?
Correct.
Have we worked with all these friends before? Have they all been bidders?
Yes, yep. At some point or another, some more than others. I know just recently in the hall, Justin had mentioned that Becker County has done a lot of pipes with Riley Brothers. They've done some work for the county, but I've heard very good things about their pipe crews. So, I know they're a big company. They've got big equipment. And the one hurdle that we're probably going to see this year is going to be in the manufacturing and delivery of the pipe itself. We've heard that the one company is maybe two or three months out, you know, not uncommon with many things, refrigerators, televisions, everything else, pipe wood. But anyway, I'm a little disheartened with that, but hopefully, it works within the schedule if we can get those pipes delivered, even if it was in late August. You know, usually, it's dry, and the rivers are lower then, and they're a little easier to construct. So, that's the one concern I have, is just to see when the delivery is expected. And there's two suppliers, main suppliers in our area. One is Forterra out of Holly, and the other one's Hancock Concrete Products. And Hancock has delivered most of our pipe, but we're assured that we'll get the pipe. It's going to be, they're backed up, I guess, I should say.
All right, we have an apparent low bidder in Riley Brothers, and we have a motion to approve that, subject to verification of all the.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Gross.
Second the motion.
Second by Commissioner Mojo. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have a request for approval of the Beltway Letter of Map Revision. Lomar, Matt, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. So, this is about, what, five-ish years in the making now?
Yeah.
We're starting to see the light at the end of the tunnel here. We're starting to see the, the light at the end of the tunnel here. And just some background for Commissioner Ebbinger and Kaylee. I think this was started in, in two thousand and sixteen. There were some issues with the floodplain not quite being very accurate between roughly the Buffalo River Speedway, just beyond that, and then up toward, to the northwest towards Glendon, and so there are a lot of homes in the floodplain that probably shouldn't have been. So the county had worked with Houston Engineering to basically revise the, the flood insurance rate maps for, for this area. And I'll pull those up here so you can see them.
Do you know what these people have had to pay higher rates because of this, these past five years?
I'm sure they've just had to pay the, the normal flood insurance rate.
Yeah, and, and the way that, that works is, is the flood insurance is required by any, any structures that, that have mortgages.
Right.
So keep in mind, if, I mean, you, you, you could be in the floodplain, but you're not required to have flood insurance if you don't have a mortgage.
Exactly.
That's, that's an individual's choice.
Exactly, yep.
But typically, typically if you have a mortgage, you're required to, to have that.
Yep. Um, so I'll just kind of walk through the, I had sent you all in your meeting materials, just the one map that showed the residential structures that were coming out of the floodplain, and then those that were going in, and I can just pop that up here quick. So. Make this a little bigger. So all in all, it looks like nineteen houses will be coming out, excuse me, as a result of this study. Two would be going in, maybe it would be, I think, good to have those two get their base flood elevations verified, or the, the elevation at the lowest adjacent grade verified, because if it's higher than the base flood elevation, they would not go in to the, the floodplain.
Matt, would it be appropriate for you to work with them to do that?
Yeah, I think so, and one, you know, something that other communities have done is, when they've made big changes to their, their flood insurance rate maps, is they've just had a, just a surveyor available to go out and actually just verify that for the, the property owner. In some small communities, I mean, they've had like, you know, up to a hundred homes where they've had a surveyor go out and do this. We're fortunate in that we only have two, so that might be something that our, this board might want to have our, our county surveyor just available to go out and verify the elevation of the lowest adjacent, adjacent grade for those landowners. If it is above that, that base flood elevation, then they wouldn't have to go into the, into the floodplain, so.
So Matt, going on Commissioner Mojo's question, so, so this letter of map revision has not been approved yet, has it? Or has it been approved by, is it FEMA that?
FEMA has basically given us the go-ahead to send out the public notices, so it hasn't been officially approved yet, but it's to the point where.
I guess the, for those two parcels that right now would go in, do we have, rather than, rather than have them, have this map done, which would put them in?
Yep.
Right, that's what would happen right now.
Yep.
Put them in, then it would be their responsibility to do their own lomar.
Yeah.
To get back out.
Yeah.
And so my point being is, before we're done, could we give the assistance in the event that, that they would meet the criteria to stay out? Couldn't, couldn't we do that?
Yes.
Prior to this thing being finalized, to avoid them from having to, to, I mean, an individual lomar for a property can be expensive.
Yes.
For one property, right?
Yep, yep.
And so if we're, if we're doing this, and if we can, I mean, it is what it is, right? If they're, they're, it's all elevation-based.
Yep.
And so, but if we can show on their behalf, let's do it before, instead of making them do a separate lomar. I, I think, I think we should try to do that to help them. I, I mean, and the numbers are going to be the numbers. If they fall into the floodplain, they fall in the floodplain, but it'd sure be nice if we can try to see if we can get them out.
Okay, okay.
Right? It's.
So you would like me to reach out to these two landowners and?
Yeah.
Work with our county surveyor essentially to see?
Yeah.
Where they're at?
Yeah, and, and we've also, was it, was it Houston? Who, who is, who is, who did we hire to do the engineering work on this?
Houston Engineering.
Yeah, so, you know, maybe even have them, maybe they can even still assist in that, too, if. So, because an engineer has to sign off on a, on a?
Yep.
Letter of map revision.
Yep, yep. Okay, so before I, and I can check with our, I had a conversation with the state floodplain manager about this, and, and she reviewed our notices and said everything looked good. So I can double-check with her just to make sure that, that, that we can.
Rather than, rather than, Matt, as far as, I, I think rather than us approving this letter of map revision?
Yep.
Final today.
Yep.
I mean, it.
Can't we approve it based on a contingency to reach out to those two parcels?
Well, we, we, we could, but I would like to, it'd be nice to have the letter of map revision have them excluded. I don't, I don't know that, you know, what, how long would it take, a month to, to?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure about that either.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think, for me, I, I would appreciate approving based on the contingency that we'll work with the two other parcels, to survey those parcels, because there are still eleven properties that may or may not have been paying on flood insurance for more than six years that would be coming out, and I don't want to hold, hold them up from removal of that. You know, I, I get what you're saying.
The, the only point that I'm making, and I, and I agree with that, the only point that I'm making is if we're basically then saying that we're approving this letter of map revision, and, and it's contingent on working with these others, but the fact of the matter is, if we're, we're approving the letter of map revision right now, which excludes those two.
Yep.
That's what we would be doing.
Yep.
So, based on that, though, you have, on.
So it required, it'd require two new letter of map revisions for those two parcels.
But based on the memo, there's A, B, and C, and all of those three are drafts, right? I mean, what's your?
Yeah, I mean, there, there still is, there's a.
Draft one map, draft property.
There's a public comment period and an appeal period, too, I should, I should mention that, where?
Still goes on.
Where they can get an engineer to, or we can, we can provide an engineer to, to check and see where their, where their, what elevation their lowest adjacent grade is at, and then once that period is over, then it would be the, the final, yep.
And then on the letter, it says Clay County is applying for a letter of map revision, so we're not approving the final lomar today.
No, just, just approving this draft and then, and then going, the, sending the notices out going forward.
All right, Commissioner Mojo, would you like to make your motion?
Yeah, I, I'm trying to figure out how to read it. I would support the request for approval of the, on the agenda, it says "the" letter of map revision, but in the memo, it says "the draft," so.
Yeah, that's, it should have been the draft.
Okay, my motion would be to request or approve the Buffalo River draft lomar.
Okay, we have a motion. Second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gross.
Just a question, does that include working with those two property owners?
Yeah, I, it would. I think it's clarified that that will be happening anyway through the process of hearings, so I'm not sure if it specifically needs to be.
I, I think going to your question, I think ultimately what we'd like to do is, because this, I'm certainly supportive of it being the draft. What I was caught up is on the agenda, it said "the" letter of map revision. That means it's final, we're approving, we're wanting to approve the final. In the meantime, we should be, I think our board has, has told you, Matt, to go ahead and work with those other two properties to see if we can have them included in the final map revision that would show them, well, they're either going to be in or out.
Yep.
Right?
Sounds good.
Rather than having each of them have to go through the expense of doing their own lomar.
Mm-hmm.
Very good, okay.
Thanks.
All right, so I think we've clarified that. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I could, I will just say, too, if, if we find that these two properties are, their lowest adjacent grade is below the new base flood elevation, if it is possible, they will be able to bring in, they could bring in Phil to raise that lowest adjacent grade up.
And, and that would be, that would, and that's exactly what I'm talking about, because that would be nice then to still make it part of this lomar.
Yep, exactly.
As opposed to a separate lomar that would require them to do that on their own.
Exactly.
Right, okay. But it shouldn't hold up those other eleven?
Nope.
Okay, good. All right, anything else? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried, thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
And that's good news for those eleven property owners.
Yeah, I think it's nineteen, actually.
Oh, nine, okay, nineteen?
Nineteen, yep, yep.
That, that are coming out, yeah, okay. Very good, that's, all right, so our next item, Justin. And we have, we've included your second request as an agenda addition to fall here, so you're here for both.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. So yes, I'm back again requesting to fill two vacancies. Had one officer decide he, he wanted to get out of law enforcement. He's, in the past couple of years, decided that he's, he's tried his hand as being a police officer and being a correction officer, and just feels that it isn't his calling, and so he's looking to move on to something else. And we had another officer who took a position with juvenile detention. He had gone to school to, to work with juveniles rather than adult offenders, and so that was a career decision he, he made. So both these positions fall within our budget, in fact, there'll be some save, cost savings likely due to having to hire a new individual. And both positions are required as part of our DOC staffing plan.
I'll make a motion to approve the request.
Both.
And the addition.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Ebbinger. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried, all right, you're good to go. Thank you. All right, we're committee reports. Commissioner Kaylee, would you like to start today?
Sure. Last week on Wednesday, I attended the Morehead Business Association meeting. There was a presentation from a local gunsmith about his industry, and a really interesting discussion on firearms and related legislation after that. On Thursday, the third, we had a meeting with Michelle Fishbach and her staff here, and most of us here in this room attended that. We talked about childcare needs in our part of the state, and we also talked about broadband, the viability of family farms, and funding ongoing FM diversion costs, and some fraudulent unemployment claims. So it was, we covered a lot of ground with her. It was a nice meeting that we had, and I'm sure that there will be ongoing conversations with her and her staff. That concludes my reports.
Thank you, I'm going to go to my right, Commissioner Gross.
Tuesday, Commissioner Ebbinger and I attended the criminal justice meeting. They informed us about probation is now moved down to the first floor. They should be moved in there, I think, because I think they were moving in Tuesday. The felony division, which is over the, by the legion, they'll stay there for another two years, but I think they'll probably be looking at trying to find a space here somewhere when that two-year lease is up. That may be upcoming, it's down the road a little bit. The SCS program is very much starting up again, and they're going out there with people, so townships and stuff like that should be aware of that, and, you know, if they got some projects going, to get ahold of them. And I guess there's the other, only other thing to discuss, there's some soundproofing, they had interview rooms in the, in the, I don't know, the law enforcement center or somewhere, they had to soundproof the rooms, I mean, and where they're at, I guess, so. That wasn't working out, so they're doing that project, too. Wednesday, we had, attended the groundbreaking of the Morehead School, the Morehead High School. Also, we had a building committee meeting. Now, we discussed the new plan, the capital improvement plan, minded some projects. Those projects, we went over before, but we just took some of them out of there now. We also discussed public health, was requesting some more space over in the Family Service Center. There's some possible options of renting out this space back here that's available now, renting that out, too. And we're looking at the rates for all the Family Service Center, for all the square footage, to increase that rates for starting twenty twenty-two. Also attended a drug court presentation there on Wednesday afternoon. Thursday, Drew Ready reported, Commissioner Kaylee ready reported on the Congresswoman Fishbach being here at the meeting, which we all, which all attended, thank you. That was it.
Thank you, Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. Last week, I also attended the groundbreaking of the Morehead High School. There are several different school districts that are in the process of construction, so it's exciting to see the investment that our county has put on educating our youth. Thursday, I attended Congresswoman Fishbach's meeting here, just want to extend my gratitude to staff and the Congresswoman for making time to meet with the county board, but also the amount of department heads that were present at that meeting. I felt it was really a important dialogue between those who are providing service to the constituents in Clay County and the Congresswoman who's working on legislation in Washington, DC. I think it's important for her to see where, where the locals are in terms of what the needs are. We did have a lot of, covered a lot of different ground, workforce, and, and others, so that was good. The next day, I was invited to be on the Congresswoman's Agriculture Advisory Committee for the northern, northern part of District Seven. Went to Crookston to have conversations with all different players in the ag community, and it really was reflective of the concerns and comments that we'd had on the Thursday meeting, how it plays into agriculture as well. We did talk a lot about infrastructure and making sure that those are, the bridges and roads and rail are strong in terms of getting commodity out, but also talked about workforce and the shortages that we are seeing at all levels, and the importance of making sure that because we really are in the breadbasket of the world, our policies are reflective of making sure that ag is a sustainable, a sustainable venture. So I appreciate the opportunity to be part of that, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Ebbinger.
Thank you. On, last Tuesday, on first, had a, a meeting with Mary Philippi, the Director of the Triple RDC, regarding the issues that we discussed this morning. She responded, of course, and, and gave us a good presentation today. Also, as Commissioner Gross indicated, he did a good job, the Clay County Criminal Justice Advisory Meeting met virtually on that. And I was also on the third, which was, what, Thursday, a meet and greet with Congresswoman Fishbach. I'd like to reiterate, it was great that staff was there and the people that turned out. It, it, we had some good dialogue on that, and I spoke to the Congresswoman afterwards about some of the criminal justice issues that we were facing right now. Also discussed the importance of the diversion and the fact we need ongoing funding support from the federal end, and she expressed willingness to do so and to work with Congressman Armstrong, North Dakota, who's already moving along on several issues. And that completes my report.
Thank you. I have to go back two weeks. I was gone again last week, so I want to start off on Tuesday, May 25th. I just wanted to comment about the management retreat that we had. I think that was, a lot of good dialogue at that meeting. Thank you, Steve, for your involvement and the rest to plan that. We still have a lot of, a lot of things to still go over based on that meeting, but it was, I really thought it was well done. Prairie Lakes was May 26th, and everything is going well there. We're looking at potentially getting our own insurance in place. We were hoping that made it by July 1st, but there's, there's a little bit of delays, if you can imagine, delays in government work happening, it does. And then Thursday morning, I had solid waste meeting at, and there we had, got an update from construction engineers and landfill project updates from Burns and Mack, McDonald, and then Kirk talked about the landfill fires that had occurred that morning. We also met with the mayors of the small cities regarding the dispatch issues, which we spent a lot of time talking with Mary about today, and that dialogue will continue on with those small cities to hopefully come up with a, a good solution to the concerns they have in operations. The Diversion Authority met also then at 3:30 that day, or actually, we had a, we had a MCC JPA meeting that day first, and, and we did approve some additional land agreements or appraisal processes for some additional lands in, in Minnesota. Then the Diversion Authority that afternoon, May 27th. We got a, quite an update, and I think, hopefully pretty soon, we're going to probably get our, our P3 contract. I think it's scheduled for June 18th, I think is the date, so that could be an interesting timeframe. And I know that, that meeting, it's a special meeting that I think we're scheduled to have on June 18th, and that does conflict with our regional AMC meeting in Fergus, so I, we're going to have to figure out how we're going to, both Commissioner Ebinger and I are supposed to be here, so we'll see. Maybe one of us at least can get back for that, or if we can, both, that'd be great. On June 2nd, we had our Building Improvement Committee meeting, and Commissioner Gross did a good overview on that. I don't really have anything to add to his report. I, I do want to mention that I'm sorry I was not able to be here for the gathering and commu, and discussion with Representative Fishbach. And also, I'm disappointed that I could not be at that groundbreaking for the new high school. On a personal note, I think if you have cloudy vision, it's good to get, get that looked at, and I've had two, two surgeries, and they're both very successful, and I can actually see things now, so. It's, somebody would mention it's life-changing, and it really is to be able to see clear. Commissioner Mojo's smiling. I can see her smile, though.
Yes.
All right. Jenny, you had, before we go to Steve, Jenny, you had a couple more things?
Yes, thank you. When I was at the Moorhead groundbreaking, I had some discussion with the builders and engineers about the Career Academy, and I know that staff has had the opportunity to walk through that, but because so many of us are in discussions about workforce shortages, had asked if it would be possible for the Clay County Board to tour that, or tour, as Ryan Berg used to say.
Yeah, tour.
So if we could, I know everyone's busy with schedules, but that will be opening this fall, so maybe if we could schedule for this board to walk through that by the end of the summer, I would surely appreciate that.
Excuse me, I just want to add to that. Are they going to have a public opening that, you know, does anybody know? Not that I'm, that you should be aware of, but just whether anybody was informed of that.
Yeah, we've not heard anything of any open house at this point.
Excuse me, go ahead.
That's okay. That would probably be forthcoming. The next item is typically, Steve, we have quarterly updates on expenditures versus revenues year-to-date, and I, I'm not sure if maybe I missed that, but now that it's June, if we could get that with an accurate estimate where our budgets are all year-to-date standing, I'd really appreciate that. And then the final piece, I just need clarification on, is are all of the buildings open, or are we still appointment-only at the Family Service Center?
I think our discussions that we've had, that we had at our, our retreat, it was that we are continuing by appointment-only at the, at the LEC, or excuse me, at the Family Service Center at this time.
Until?
Well, right now, we have, we have coverage at the, at the front door until July 2nd, and so we'll, we're going to be having some discussions here next week on the PIC committee as far as recommendations coming forward to this board of how we'd like to move forward with that.
So just one person's comment, I think that it's important that we get open, completely open. I am okay if there's overlap with the security guard. I don't think that's inappropriate. But now that we are in summer programming for a lot of families and others, having an appointment is not always convenient. Sometimes you run, do, and err in as soon as it's available, and now that staff is back, I surely feel that we have the coverage to do that. So I'd hope that we would move forward towards opening that building completely before the end of June personally.
Okay.
That's a PIC agenda item coming up next.
Yep.
Thank you.
I have one question also on the upcoming meetings. That awards ceremony at the Law Enforcement Center, is that Thursday or Friday?
It is, it is Friday. I confirmed that with, with the sheriff. It's, oh, excuse me, it's Thurs, it's Thursday, the 10th at 11:00 AM.
Okay, because I think I was notified I was at 11:00. So it is Thursday.
11:00 AM. 10th, 10th at 11:00.
That, um...
That'll be at the LEC.
...conflict with Commissioner Ebinger and I on a, on a juvenile center meeting? All right. Steve, do you want to give your report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last Tuesday, I met with Scott Fiddick from Clan McCarthy. He was the, with the architect firm, did our law enforcement center correctional facility, and also did some work on our government center, so we reviewed those, that project. On the second, we had a building committee that's been covered by Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Gross. And that afternoon, we had some budget discussions with multiple department heads. Again, our department heads are to have their budgets in to Lori by June 18th. On the third, I participated in Congressman, Congresswoman Fishbach's meeting that's been addressed by the commission, and that afternoon, met with Joe Olson on a series of issues. On the fourth, I met with Rory Schmitz in regards to some technology questions that are going to be brought forward at PIC. We had a department head evaluation preparation on the fourth, and, and also spent a significant amount of time looking at the American Research or Rescue Act, research information. I will have an upcoming meeting this week. On the seventh, I met with both Lori and Darren on a series of county issues, and we began some work on the 2022 individual budgets for the administrator and commissioners. This morning, prior to board, I did have a virtual meeting with Chris McShane, Chris McShane from Onsted, Wichita, Eric Dodds, Dr. Bob Zimmerman, some land agents in regards to a question on one of the last written offers that was addressed by this board. And just a couple of different things, the next Monday, we will be, we have our county road and bridge project at tour that will be leaving from the government center at 9:00 AM. We also, next, our next board meeting next week, just a reminder, is an evening board meeting. We'll have a board at 5:30, followed by a Board of Appeals and Equalization at, at 6:30. And Kathy, just wanted to pass along that we are going to be having a vaccine clinic here on campus at the Family Service Center on the 10th, Thursday, up from 9:00 AM till 1:00 PM. They're going to have both Pfizer and Janssen, the Johnson and Johnson, and it is a walk-up, or they can go to our webpage and get a reservation that way. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Couple more things, just a follow-up regarding the building committee meeting. I think Commissioner Gross talked about that we, we looked at taking some, a few things out of there that might qualify under a different funding mechanism. I did suggest, and hopefully this, that can go to finance committee soon. I, I really think that between the capital improvement bond and then the transfer station bonds, we need to get that going, and we need to get that in before we start seeing those rates increase. So anything that we can do there, Steve, to get that so we can call for the bids on the bonds as soon as possible after we have the discussion with the board on the financing? Then the, one last thing, the American Recovers meeting that was scheduled for 10 on Thursday. I have a conflict there, so I'm hopeful that we can either do it either earlier that day or later that day. I'm, I'm certainly open to having it that day, but, but I, I chair the regional juvenile meeting, and I need to be there, and I'd like to be at both those meetings if I could, so I don't know if...
There's also a conflict with our construction meeting and road tour, tour on Monday.
Oh, yeah, well, we could probably move that construction meeting back a little bit to two or something, I suppose. So we'll work on those, and I don't know if, if, Steve, if you can see what you can do on that meeting Thursday for the American Recovers. Anything else? Brian, anything else?
Oh, excuse me, what was the vaccination date?
The 10th.
The 10th?
Thursday, yep. Thursday from 9:00 AM till 1:00 PM at the Family Service Center in Suite 105.
Is that just a walk-in?
It is a walk-in, or they can make a reservation. Yep.
So it's a walk-in to our building that's appointment-only?
Correct.
Okay.
Good journey. Thank you.